Good morning.
We're ready.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and our regular commissioner is now in session. First item on the agenda, and both talk by our county clerk, Ramjan Babelnoam, chief deputy senate of the city in this morning. Good morning, Senator.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Judge Rathmo.
Present.
Commissioner Moya.
Present.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
And Commissioner Gasa.
Present.
Judge, we have a form.
Thank you, Seneca. I would like to praise the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, Communications Commissioners. Anything to share this morning with the public? Uh, we do have a dais out at the county cemetery right now, uh, catching up on the grass. Uh, so just bear with us, and, uh, you know, like I said, they're out there this morning, and. That's good. Uh, we had some decent rain, so it should get the grass. We've had rain, you know, and we're blessed, you know, but we've had rain, you know, past two weeks, and we'll be able to, uh, you know, go catch up.
Same for us, uh, we have our county crew who's already starting to mow the the easements, and we couldn't cut them if the rain had been.
I mean, every day, just about. It was every afternoon.
But we're coming down from the high school down this way, so.
It seems they were hitting this, and the the places that got the rain to get the following follow-up rain.
Now I know how the Florida residents feel.
Yeah, it was nice. It's, uh, right, hopefully get some more and get some in the rain upstream and get some water in, um, from the reservoir. We're still using that decent pump, huh?
Yes, sir. Just because of the silt, uh, that has built up there under the pump. So the pump's already, uh, repaired, we already just ran it, so, um, uh, we we just don't want to run it too much due to just because of heavy silt. I know that, uh, Mr. What's that is has has a company committed into to do the study, so.
Let's help remove, yes, yes. Any other communications, uh, about the hot football doing very well this year?
They they won this this Friday, this Friday.
I believe they won twenty-four zero against Roma.
That's good, because Roma had always, you know, given a struggle the last few years, and I'm glad we got.
The the economy game, yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, that's definitely good. I know they beat, uh, Corpus Christi last week as well.
So that's a good year, yes. Our sports team did do very well, and U I L, we've got a lot of talented kids in our school district, so that's always good to see.
And I believe we have our first, uh, home game this week, so if you, uh, you have a chance, swing by and, uh, check out the Hawks.
I'll be there. I think, uh, some of us are getting our T-shirts ready for, uh, a game close to a fifty-year, yeah, uh, reunion.
Reunion.
Forty-five, uh, so the class of seventy-nine should be there, uh, not this week, but the following week, so I need to go get my T-shirt ready and see how many of us show up and see what we look like forty-five years later.
Well, what we're last, I guess, that's a little less to do than.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, but yeah, it's always good to see hot football. Uh, any other communications? We'll move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the commissioner's court on any items on the agenda. Members of the public, we'll move on to, uh, item number six, a pool of invoices, and in our packets, commissioner, we had invoices from September fifth, twenty twenty-five through September the eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five, for a pool of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Motion to approve it, second by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Gasa. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is a pool of checks issued, and in your packets also, we had checks from, uh, same same dates, nine five, twenty twenty-five through nine eighteen, twenty twenty-five, for a pool of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Motion to approve it, second by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Gasa. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to our action items. We will deliberate and consider action on item number eight. Is to amend the contract for use of the Guadalupe and Iguana Peters swimming conflict, Commissioner Moya.
So, Judge, on that one, I went ahead and modified eight hundred, three hundred, uh, for the rental fees. I believe it went out like it was four hundred. Uh, so from.
Twenty-one more.
It says second one is one.
Well.
Yes, just just for just for. So it went up to to four hundred, and I think, uh, the deposit will be a hundred. It went through council, everything got approved through there. I don't know what time he's gonna get here, but, uh, they go through him and everything checked out. Yeah, I mean, chemicals are going up, the prices of everything is rising. I mean, any help that the county can get, I think it's a it's a plus. You know, my guys work pretty hard to to keep it maintained, and, you know, it's hard when you don't have the money to.
Motion. Motion approved by Commissioner Gasa, second by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is to amend and enforce contract for baseball field rental for precinct one.
So safety, Judge, on this one, it was, uh, sent to council, it went through. The only thing I needed to add was, uh, what was it called, the? Something, an identity or something like that?
Yeah, they come like technology.
Yeah, but everything was good on it. So on this one, I mean, there there is, uh, organizations that are charging per kid, and I believe it's like a hundred dollars a kid, and they're using our facilities.
Right.
So I think it's only fair if they pay a fee as well to, you know, pay the light, the water, the maintenance of the fields, because we're doing the maintenance, and I don't think it's right then for them to make profit off of our kids or the youth, you know, our youth, and not have to pay anything for using our facilities. I mean, and I'm just talking about mine. I know four, and that's up to you, what you want to do.
So what will the fee be, Commissioner?
So it'd be three hundred and fifty dollars. That includes all the fuels in precinct one, uh, for the week. That's a weekend tournament rate. So last time they had a tournament, and I think at five teams, they charged two hundred, so it was a thousand dollars they made. The teams paid the umpire fee, so basically it's all profit for the person organizing it, right? And, uh, the weekend on tournament practice rate, that's a hundred dollars pretty much a week. So, or for the month, I'm sorry, for the month.
So they, uh, how do we, they schedule, like, the use of the field?
They, basically, right now, it's it's whoever gets there first, but at this point, we're gonna have to make a schedule and have the times and dates that are gonna be practiced, because it does get kind of, becomes a conflict, you know, that that, A, I was here first, A, but you've been here for two hours, A, this and that, so that'll alleviate that part, and especially if they're they're charging their case, but they're gonna have to pay, so of course they have the priority first.
Commissioner, yesterday I spoke with, uh, Jim Hawn, and they charge, uh, two fifty for cleanup fee, so that's, I mean, that's just.
And that, yeah, they didn't use a hundred dollar, uh, deposit, so that if they don't clean up, the county will stay with the hundred dollar deposit, not to get it sent back to them.
And I tried, uh, I I reached out to what county, what county does not have any fields, but the city, I know they do charge.
They charge two hundred and fifty a field.
A field.
A field.
For the, is that for like the season, and?
Uh, it's for the month, I think. Yeah.
So three fifty will be for the whole weekend.
Yeah, that is, that's only for the the tournaments, the weekend, three fifty.
But this, so this would apply to all the field commissioners, or?
Uh, I just asked for mine, I mean, that's up to them.
Uh, I'll I'll look into it, and I'll and I'll review it. I know over here in my field, uh, all the coaches, uh, correlate with each other and say, okay, we'll be practicing from this time to this time, so for for the, to avoid the conflict of interest with, you know, times and stuff. Um, I do, the people that do use the field, they do clean up after themselves over here in my area. Uh, they do send, when they have tournaments, they hire, you know, a person to come the day after, throw all of the trash, clean up the bleachers and stuff. Uh, but I'll I'll look into it and and see if it's beneficial for, you know, for the area over here. I'll go in and, uh, and.
Now, these payments are made to the county treasurer?
Yeah, it'll go to the general fund. I know that we're hurting there, so anything that we can add to there is a plus.
Yeah, and I believe you had mentioned that if it's gonna be like for fundraisers for nonprofits.
Yeah, like if they come in, like if they ask for a community center, hey, you know, over this, it's it's to benefit, you know, a family that's seen or anything, you know, we can, that's not a problem. And people that don't charge, I mean, they can use the field if they're on discretion, you know, when they want. And mainly mainly it was for the people that are making a profit out of our youth, you know, I mean, they gotta they gotta pay to, it can't just be profit for them. I mean, we're wasting money on the county's part, and we're hurting them.
Now, if if a parent just wants to go play with his kid at any one point, are they gonna be filled out of the field, or?
No, I mean, we got, I got three fields, I mean.
Okay, so this is just for, uh, organized practice events and tournaments?
Organizations that are getting profit out of, out of for you.
So the public as as a whole, if they want to use it in the afternoon, because these are public facilities.
Oh, definitely.
So.
Yeah, it it sticks here in our contract.
I just, I don't wanna have parents being, hey, you're not supposed to be in here, you're gonna pay a hundred dollar fee or whatever.
Yeah. Is that gonna, is that gonna happen also for like the soccer fields and football and other?
The football fields?
We're gonna have to do that with that, with that, with which from the terms and stuff like that.
The football, the football is about to start, and is that anybody in the football?
Yeah, it'll be the same.
So the the soccer fields that they practice, they're gonna be paying the practice?
Yeah, but it's for profit. For the for the tournaments and the season, I mean, I know they make a killing. I mean, they're, you pay seventy-five dollars a kid. So, I mean, I mean, have y'all okay with, you know, people making money off the county, and the county not reimbursed, I mean?
So this is just for the baseball, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's that's reasonable.
So let's just do the baseball fields, but the public, if they wanna go practice, nobody's on there, and they want, they wanna take their kids, play catch, they can go.
Good.
I I think that's, is that clear with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And these are near fields, and we have to allow this in the surf field?
Yeah, I mean, people have to approve it.
Yeah, because it has a contract.
Just all on, yeah.
Is this only for precinct one, or for the all of them?
No.
For y'all, just precinct one, um, so that's that's the agenda item. I think the commissioner are gonna look at their own situations and see if we can, uh, I think in the end, we almost have to be, uh, cohesive unit and all for precincts. But but we can start off with this. I I just, I I, you know, I I'm worried about the public not being able to, uh, access those facilities. Uh, and I certainly don't want to get to that point where, uh, we, you know, people are not allowed to go to those fields. So that's one make stress the point, because this is for organized, uh, events that they need to get approval through the court or through the commissioners?
Uh, the contract is to the commissioners and, uh.
So that will be coming to the court before they have an event?
Yeah, like if they're asking for for the way of the fee, it'll it'll come to the court.
Well, no, for a profit, they say they're having a tournament next week. Sometime we don't meet, but every two weeks.
No, that'll be the discretion of the commissioners.
Okay, through the commissioners, then, again.
Like the respective precincts.
And y'all will be collecting those?
They'll have to come and pay it, yeah.
At the turn.
They're gonna be.
Yeah. I think.
Are you got it?
Yes.
Motion to approve it, so then?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Gasa. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number ten is to discuss and take possible action to set up vending machines at the county shop.
Uh, Judge and Commissioner, I was approached by Maricela Salinas from Zapata Drive-In, uh, about three weeks ago. Uh, I just didn't have a chance to put in the last reading. Um, she's interested in putting a vending machine at the county shop, just one. It's gonna be a snack machine. Uh, no money to the county, that's just to give the opportunities to the employees, uh, to get a snack if, uh, they desire to get a snack while they're on the.
We've had them in the past in some of our departments where they they have vending machines from time to time. I don't think we've ever charged a fee.
No, never charged. Oh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gasa, second by Commissioner Morales. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, as far as this is, Judge, when is the date that they can set up, as of after today?
After today.
After today.
Okay, thank you.
Item number eleven is to discuss and take possible action on ways to control the fuel spending on the Rowan Bridge, Commissioner Solis.
Judge and Commissioners, also, uh, for this item, it's just another method of tracking and reducing the fuel amount that we've been spending. I know we've been going over budget, and this is talking about, uh, Rowan Bridge, strictly Rowan Bridge, giving a process starting for Rowan Bridge. I know, uh, we, uh, I'll be right with you. I I know, uh, I spoke with, uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, what is it, I'm sorry. And I know the school district has has a process where you go and check out the gas card with, uh, respective person, so I know you do it at the bus barn, that is correct. Uh, so I worked there six years as well, so we will go check out the ga- the gas card, uh, go fill it up, and then go return the gas card. And I think that'll be, uh, a great method that we can, uh, adopt and use as well, uh, so we can keep track of our our fuel spending, and that'll save us, you know, quite a bit of money.
So what you're proposing is, uh, reduce, right now currently, almost every, uh, department has, or every person in your department has a card, or has a?
I think, uh, it just depends on, on, you know, each commissioner.
Mine is just my my career.
I know I have mine, uh, two crew leaders and, uh, another employee, but this will also, you know, and and what I'm trying, uh, what I, uh, propose to the court is have three different gas cards per precinct.
Yeah.
So we have one, uh, for the for the vehicles, one for heavy equipment, and one for the smaller, uh, equipment, like lawnmowers, tractors. So at the end of the year, we can have a breakdown of exactly what's spending, where's spending, what's spending. Uh, uh, Mr. What's that, I'm sorry, you had to.
Well, I was, I did print out, uh, the, for the end of twenty twenty-four, uh, the budget analysis, so that I could see. I didn't do it only for the Rowan Bridge, I did it for all the departments. Uh, I don't know if y'all wanna see that right now, or?
I I think the only.
And the person that would be in charge is who?
Just so y'all see, uh.
I know, I think there's a spending limit per card.
Yeah.
Right now, so that's a thing that you all have to address.
I think they have like a two hundred.
On a daily, uh, daily spending.
I wrote on top where each one was.
Water.
Yeah, I mean, we're we we certainly spend a lot more than what we budgeted, so I I think, Commissioner, that I think in addressing our short part, following our budgets, uh, so we have to see this by every department that's.
At that, at this point, we better look, uh, and try to save any way we can, uh, before we get to the next, uh, budget, I mean, uh, even I know it's a year away. Uh, but that will, you know, help our situation and having to, uh, you know.
And I don't even think our budget has adjusted to our gas prices that have gone up. It's always been this twenty thousand, and I mean, if you're smart, you gotta adjust to what the cost is, you know, normally.
Yeah.
You know, and I I knew when I came in, I knew my budget wasn't full, so I knew I was gonna go over the over budget, because, I mean, we cover a lot of areas, and we're driving the tractors over there. The maintainer or owner operator here, he'll tell you how much it weighs, I mean, my guys are all here, so they can, you know, if y'all have questions, they can answer free.
Yeah, I I will overspending as well. I just transfer from my road.
Yeah, I have a bigger precinct.
But this, this, this will be, uh, just a, just a track, and hopefully try to reduce, you know, we can save five, ten thousand dollars, and it'll be great.
And who do they have to check out the card to?
Well, it just depends what the court, uh, wants.
I mean, I, my, that's what my crew does, I mean.
I I think we can, if we need to, if we're gonna consolidate this, I I think, uh, it has to be through our, uh, there in the Rowan Bridge.
It would have to be, uh, my recommendation will be one person, that one person has control of all of the.
Check it out. The school district has a similar setup, Commissioner?
We we have our office taking care of that.
So an employee would, needing gas, would come in and.
You have to check out, check out the card, go fill up, sign the, like, check out the card, and when you brought it back, you have to, we'll sign it in, and then they have to sign the receipt whenever they get it.
And they have a binder with all the gas cards, that is correct?
Yeah, so I I think that, uh, we can kind of, you know, not reinvent the wheel, just a a guy who would think to be working at another entity, and right now, it's it's really, a lot of it is just, you know, we use it, uh, regardless of of whether we have money in the line item or not. In the end, at the end of the year, all of this is over. Now, is it, can we add more money to the line items? No, we we don't have that, uh, ability right now, so what we have to do, Commissioners, is adjust to what we have. Uh, maybe not go on as often as as we as we are used to, because we just don't have the money to pay the fuel. Like, I I can see right here, uh, I'm I have a department, so I see for twenty-four, our water department, uh, we had budgeted, uh, thirty-seven thousand. We spent sixty-eight thousand, so we're over thirty-one thousand. Uh, precinct.
Precincts and.
The precincts, all four precincts are together.
Will be, um, actually, real quick.
So on the precincts, we have twenty, twenty-five thousand, we spent forty-one thousand on average over, uh, one, and then look, so I think, for the most part, I mean, we're we're spending way more than than what we can afford to to use. Uh, so I I think we just need to adjust how how many trips we make to the landfill on a daily basis. I mean, I see trucks and and going on a daily basis every day, back and forth, so maybe some days we don't, we just sit down and and do something else that doesn't require as much gas usage.
Yeah, for me, I have my crew leader that, you know, when when they need fuel, they'll they'll go and tell my crew leader, my crew leader goes to the fuel station, fuels up for them. Print out, writes down what unit was, uh, the fuel and stuff, so I I pretty much have it under control under my precinct, and, uh, you know, I I'm still under budget.
You're still under budget, so it can be done.
It can be done, yes.
Better. So I I guess, I mean, if we, I I'm I'm comfortable that that's how you want it, one card for your crew leaders, they'll they'll be responsible for that?
Yeah, like Joey mentioned, Mister, uh, Commissioner, precinct three, uh, I guess one for heavy equipment, one for the lawnmowers and weeders and stuff like that, and then I know.
For the truck. And one card with the crew leader responsible, I think.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing, yeah, I mean, I work solid.
We'll just, and we'll have to, you know, try to stay within budget, which is.
Yeah, I I get it, I mean, we try, the only thing that kills us is we have, it's, you you know, Chihuahua, you know, you know the rules, we try, it's just, there's impossible.
There's there's a long.
Yeah, and I know every time we use, uh, the heavy equipment, uh, whoever the driver is, when they come back, they have to fuel up, you know, the amount, so I know we we move, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, my driver moves, uh, precinct for one and two, and, you know.
So I just got a CD of driver recently, Mr. Flot is within the bag, so he'll start with our equipment. The only thing is that we need to fix those eighteen-wheaters, they have racing tires. They have to pass a pre-trip inspection, and they've done some, and they'll pass some, so we need to really get, get.
Certainly, that'll be a priority for the new budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to the.
If he pulls us over, right?
Yeah, I talked to the to the mechanic, and I told him, I said, well, we need to get him up to specs, you know, we'll we'll pay what we have to pay for each precinct, and, you know, get him up and running. And I said, we need to have both of them up and running, not just one.
No, we have some.
Along with the belly dubs, you know, we need to fix all of that.
Okay. Good, yeah. So then the motion would be, Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Solis to approve, uh, to have the the crew leaders in charge of a one card, that and that's what we're proposing. Okay, so that's, got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gasa. Any discussion? And this is just, we'll start with Rowan Bridge, and we'll try to address the other departments that we move along with. We'll just give this a trial, see how we can, uh, certainly, uh.
Get a handle.
Just get a handle on it, maybe become a little more common with the.
It'll be a working process.
Yeah.
So we can track it a little bit better.
So the crew leader will stay with the cars and know they'll be able to.
Right, it'll be just one card for, uh, the trucks, vehicles.
That that'll work out, it'll be.
And then I guess they can check with our administrator at the shop, see how much the budget is going, and how much they have, and try to limit the.
I think we either pick up the cards and then order new ones, right, with with its perspective, like precinct three, uh, heavy equipment, precinct three.
So will they shoot new cards in, yeah?
And then bring the other ones in and turn them in.
Yeah, that'll be.
We let me know if it's going to have.
So we can have a, you know, a breakdown of how much heavy equipment used per precinct, how much, uh, trucks used and stuff.
I can request it from Mr. Sunny.
And all the other projects too, that we take, uh, you know, all the break, the breakdown of those.
Correct, yeah.
Very well. Got a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you don't like, good morning.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Item number twelve. How are you, sir?
Doing just fine, just fine. I missed, uh, I had a, uh, hearing late at night, so.
No problem.
Done by fifteen minutes.
We had a contract, everything was good with them.
Okay, yeah, everything was good on the contracts, Judge. Just on the pool contract, the same indemnity release that we have, uh, our pool contract needs to be put on the field.
Okay. That'll work. Item number twelve is to approve the use of the Bravo Park on November the ninth, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM for a yoga wellness vendors market. Commissioner Solis.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Also, I was informed by Lee Anne Lopez, uh, she's hosting a yoga wellness vendors market on Sunday, November nine, uh, nine AM, and this is also for public information. Anybody that wants to join, reach out to Mr. Lee Anne Lopez, and she'll squeeze you in. Uh, also make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis, Commissioner Morales, oh, Commissioner Moya, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries thirteen to set the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal years about the county sheriff's office and constable fees. I think, Commissioner, they were provided to us by the sheriff, uh, on, on the package. I I don't believe there's any change, any change? Morning, Andrew.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
My only other change or added rather is the, uh, proposed fees of cancellation. It's, uh, it's the very bottom.
The very bottom, everything else is the same, okay.
That is correct, everything else stays the same.
Okay. Motion to approve this, presented.
Second.
Motion to approve is presented by Commissioner Solis, second, uh, by Commissioner Gasa, uh, setting the constable fees, and the cancellation, uh, order of self-cancellation will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, for the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to request approval to hire paramedic, Chiomana Loyola, candidate, oh, Chiomana Loyola. General Order Budget Code ten dash five four three, slot number ten, as a paramedic at fifteen dollars and nineteen cents an hour. I know, motion approved by Commissioner Solis.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Gasa. Danny, our fire chief, is at a conference today, and, but, uh, he, we're appointed to get a paramedic, uh, in our board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to request approval to donate a two thousand and eight Ford Expedition, uh, for, it's a constable unit for precinct two. Uh, there's a Batwa Water Plant, I think that'll be just a transfer.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to transfer, uh, from Commissioner Gasa, second by Commissioner Solis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, did that other one work out pretty well, that those expeditions?
Yeah, yes, sir. I know that this one has a couple of problems, so we're gonna take a look to see if it's gonna be worth it to fix it, or use it as expert parts, but, because we have one just like it.
Okay, okay, good. So we'll be transferring that one over. Item number sixteen is to continue the letter of present to establish landmark trust fund for the financial insurance for the closure and post-closure of the San Nasus landfill number seven eighty-three for the amount of six hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, and close landfill number fifteen twenty-eight for the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty, as requested by T C Q, their, uh, financial analysts. Okay, so we.
It's an annual thing, I remember.
I know, but we're about.
We're we're towards the end, so that'll free up those three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars on the on the.
Yeah, hopefully we can release those, uh, in the next few months, uh, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five thirty. We've we've done everything we we're supposed to.
Pretty much, yeah.
Uh, to close a landfill that was about three miles out of town, Commissioners, before we venue, so everything.
We're just waiting for the approval from T C Q at this point.
Okay. So I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gasa, second by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor, say aye.
And I'll be bringing the letter of present from the national bank.
Yeah, we have a, a certificates of obligation, so.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Item number seventeen is to approve the twenty twenty-six workers' compensation renewal questioner for participation in the tech rent, R and P, voltage compensation program. Morning, Ms. Miller.
Good morning. Uh, this is our annual, uh, renewal for workers' compensation. Everything has remained the same, just, uh, updated our yearly counts and, uh, salary comps. Basically, like I said, everything's gonna be doing the same for this, uh, year.
And as budget-wise, we're good as far.
Budget-wise, yes, we're good.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Gasa, uh, to approve the twenty twenty-six renewal for workers' compensation. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you, number. Item number eighteen is to request the funding for the Boys and Girls Club, uh, funding for twenty twenty-four, twenty, could that be?
This current.
The last, uh, quarter?
Um, for this current year.
So it'd be twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-four?
No, twenty, well, this current, um, budget year.
Okay.
One of them.
Are are we, we're not paying it quarterly, or?
No, we pay it annually.
Oh, you pay it annually, okay. Hi, Ms. Fessy.
Good morning, Judge. My Commissioners, I just wanted to go over some, uh, uh, numbers with you all, just to give you a little glimpse of what we've done, uh, this past year, and what we're focusing on to do this coming year. So the impact that we made for twenty twenty-four, uh, members served were three hundred and forty-five. Um, outreach, we did a thou- uh, a thousand eight hundred and ninety. Uh, meals served was a thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. Snacks served was, uh, nine thousand six hundred and sixty-four. Now, snack bags, we did give out, um, we do get the regulars, four thousand eight hundred. We do open that to the community, all our meals, uh, through your C A are open to public. All our snack bags are open to public, and, um, yeah, community outreach, that's just events or activities we do within the club that we outreach to kids that are non-members, to invite them to the club to kind of look around. Um, the following, our programs that we do at the club, we still are continuing the same programs, um, we've been, it's been working out well with with helping the kids, helping our community, um, in a whole. So Smart Moves is one of them. I'm not gonna go in depth, I can go in depth, the information's there. As Smart Moves is one of them, Project Run is one, Project Run is after-school, um, homework time that we do with the kids, they eat, they do homework, and then after that, it's outdoor play, plus any arts and crafts activities after. Net Smarts is something that we've done with the kids, which is a mandatory, they're gonna be using our trans, which is in the Boys and Girls Club, it is a mandatory training for kids. So they do like little videos, depending on the age group, they do little training videos to kind of show them the safety, but also how to utilize, uh, the internet in a positive way.
Correct.
Um, triple play, of course, kids like to play, so we take them out as much as we can. Dodgeball is their favorite, they do kickball, they do pickleball, they do a lot of activities at the club. So, yeah, that's their for, their favorite part of the day. Um, Passport to Magnet is one of the programs that we've been doing, um, targeting boys and and kind of giving them a glimpse of like responsibilities and stuff like that as they grow. Smart Girls, the same thing, that we do a program with just girls. Um, Total Team Takeover, we were doing, uh, well, we wanted to continue to do a Total Team Takeover, which means we wanna plan activities or plan events for targeting teams, because for affecting the work on our team numbers, um, and it's also beneficial for teams out there. Now, right in. For affecting the work on our team numbers, um, and it's also beneficial for teams out there. Now, right now, I am working with Scan. They do take probation teams to our club. They play basketball, they'll play like the foosball table. So we're trying to incorporate those kids to give them, they've been liking it, they did a little splash day, they were a part of it. So we wanna target those kids that need us the most. So, um, I'm very happy that we have that, um, uh, collaboration with Scan right now. And I know, I think we're gonna work with, um. Our juvenile probation offices, see what we can do for those.
Very good, yes.
Um, also, just to show, we have yet advocate of the youth, um, recognize the second year, which is a very, uh, good, uh, to have under our belt. Because we continue to advocate for youth of Sapa Texas. And just thank you guys, uh, for your support and your continued support for our mission. Without you guys, I don't know where we'd be. So thank you so much.
Three hundred and forty five kids.
Yes.
So on a daily basis, how many?
Uh, on a daily.
It'd be a hundred or?
No, on a daily, we'll get like seventy kids.
That's, you know, it's incredible.
But some kids, because they have other extracurricular activities, we haven't been getting them at the same time, so we gotta make sure of kids. So we just continue that.
That's incredible. Mona and Leslie, thank you for your.
Pretty sure you get more in the summer.
Year after year.
Oh, yeah, we do get more in the summer. Um, yeah, we do like a little bit, but.
Thank you guys for everything you do. I know kids look forward to it. Some right after school or, you know, that's that's their go-to place.
Yeah, yeah, we just wanna be like a second, even a second home form, so, yeah, we continue to serve our kids.
Well, according to the budget, another, an additional fifty thousand for this coming year.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm, you know, I'm happy to see that you use your monies wisely and and not have to, uh, bring in this request till the very end, so.
Yeah, yeah, we try to manage it best we can for, and especially, I mean, it all goes back to the, obviously, between Ms. Mona, we kind of say, you know, what, what does it need? Or what does it need for these kids, and we just go for it, so.
All right.
But thank you for, thank you for.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you.
And we did include, um, sorry, uh, the copy of our financials for your.
Okay, very well.
Audits are there and then I.
I think you'll have to find it.
I'll second that motion, George.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza, to approve the fifty thousand dollar contribution from Sapa County to the Board of the Girls Club. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen is to approve payment of twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy five dollars and ninety cents to Martinez Electrical Service, L L C. For a three D H seven one half horsepower pump and pump panels, uh, for the Roto Maria lift stations. Funds to come from certificates of obligation. Morning, Ralph.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Yes, sir, so this was one of the things that we wanted to fix and 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 we're requesting from the C E O, so.
Motion.
Motion approved by Commissioner Raza, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Then twenty is, uh, to approve a pay increase for Carlos Vela from eleven dollars and ten cents an hour to thirteen dollars an hour. Slot number seven, Mr. Vela has met all educational T C Q requirements and has achieved a treatment operator class D license. Very well.
This is within your budget, right? The raise, it's your money that you already have out of period, or is it a lot of some others?
Yeah, yes, sir. It was, it was already taken, yeah.
It'll follow into the segment, yeah. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Raza, seconded by Commissioner Solis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty one is to approve a pay increase for Javier Garcia from twelve dollars an hour to thirteen dollars an hour. Slot number ten, Mr. Garcia has met all educational T C Q requirements and has his treatment operator D license. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza. Solis is, uh, sewer or water?
This is from sewer right now, yes, sir.
Okay, these are sewer equipment operators.
Yes, sir. We need operators for sewer also.
I know, and so I'm glad you're filling those positions and these guys are meeting their educational requirements. I get, you give them six months and you hire?
Yes, sir. New hires are six months, and so we have one gentleman that he's already, he tested real soon, so hopefully he'll come back.
I'm glad, I'm glad. Glad to see that. Got a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Item number twenty two is to review status and approve invoices for the raw water intake project. Gonzalez, good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Judge, and Commissioners. On this, uh, raw water intake project is the one that we have, uh, going on right now for, uh. Our low water conditions. As everyone knows, our lake level is really at a low critical level. Uh, contractors been working on building the, uh, steel cage for the concrete, uh, platform. I checked on the, on that, uh, track hole that we purchased, still on, in route to be delivered. And then, uh, we had a visit with, um, the electrical contractor on the bringing power down there to provide power to that.
Gonzalez, you mentioned a steel cage?
Well, it's, it's a, it's not, it's, it's not a cage, but it's like a reinforced, like it's gonna be reinforced concrete.
Okay, 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 so, but it's not gonna be, so, so the lake does come up eventually? So we're not gonna have a, a steel barrier move?
No.
No, it's gonna be just a concrete?
It's just a, it's just.
Okay, good. That's, that's my, was my original understanding. When I, I thought it was gonna be like a safety railing, uh.
No, 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 it's a, it's a concrete slab that's reinforced with steel.
There you go, okay, that's.
So, but, uh, but we wanted the track hole to be able to get on it.
Yes.
And not, um, I mean, hold the weight of the tackle.
Sure.
And so we, it does, it's.
So, so the base?
It's a cage that they build so that the reinforcing can hold that weight.
Yes.
Okay, but it'll, it'll be, uh, within the concrete?
It'll be, it'll be within the concrete.
So there, well, there's not gonna be any procreting structures above the water, above the concrete?
No, the concrete slab, we, I wanna put a, um, I don't have it initially, but I wanted to put one, um, one pipe coming up. At least five foot above the concrete level, in case the water is just, uh, maybe a foot above it, you can't see it there and you go with your boat. Well, then if there's a five foot pole that has, uh, some, um, like, uh, like, uh, lighting, like, uh, reflective tape or something, then.
You may have, I mean, there's all types of hazards and certainly that huge structure, that that structure right above it.
The one right next to it is, yeah, we could put a sign on that one and say, keep away five hundred feet.
Exactly.
And that, that'll.
That, that, I think that would solve that problem.
Yeah, 'cause, and it's right on the end, so really nobody should be fishing right on the edge of of our, of our intake structure.
Exactly.
So, but, uh, yeah, right now it's just a slab that's gonna be, it's gonna get ground out. It's not gonna be, uh, above.
It'll be getting on the steel train.
Yeah, right now, it's, it's above ground level, but because we're, we're building it and then we're gonna, uh, support it around it, but we have, uh. Columns that's also gonna support when the track will get on it to clean around it.
I mean, with wave action and stuff, but, yeah, you're, you're gonna need something to support that erosion that's gonna take place in the.
And, yeah, and that's what, we'll, we'll end up putting something around it. So we have, uh, mainly the main item to work for this, um, for this pay period was, um. It was the, uh, the twenty by sixty concrete slab pier system, which includes that, that, um, steel, uh, reinforcement for the, for the concrete, the property, we'll be pouring that. Within this next week.
Okay.
And then, um, we'll have that. I, I'd like to get that done sooner than later. I'd like to see the lake go up, but if it goes up before we pour it. Then it's almost impossible to go back and pour it. So, once that's done, then, you know, hopefully we get some, I don't know, tropical storms or something.
Be nice, yeah, we're, we're waiting for fifteen years.
I saw some news from the, on the Mexican side that they were releasing some waters that, um, some of the landowners were holding in their ranches.
I saw that.
Without proper permit.
Correct.
And so then that's water that should come to.
It should flow into the Conchos and then, and then in the Alsted.
Yeah, and so.
It happened to be the governor of the, uh, state of Chihuahua, who had built some huge dams.
Just keeping it?
Huh?
Who's keeping all that water?
Well, the runoff, not, not the river water, but a runoff from creeks.
Runoff that comes to.
But you're talking about Casablanca-sized lakes or more.
Right.
Yeah, so, I, you have to get permits for that. If, if we start building on our side, it's the same thing. We've, we gotta get permits.
So they basically, the federal government came in and broke the dams.
Yeah.
Turned the water use.
Hopefully we get a little bit of water from the end of the wall. Um, so, um, this pay application is, uh, twenty two thousand, five sixty two fifty.
Twenty two, five?
Five sixty two fifty. And.
It's the X R?
Pay act, application number four.
Application number four. Motion to approve the amount twenty two thousand, five sixty two fifty to X R?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya, to approve application number four for twenty two thousand, five sixty two fifty to X R for further payment to move on. Any discussion? Although, we'll have discuss, the pump, the electric pump, I know we're struggling to, we got our permanent pumps in place, Ralph was mentioning it this morning, but. I guess it's silt built up since we haven't been using it.
Right. It's, it's very low that, I can probably check and see if, I mean, the water level is, we're almost at a point where you could, you know, go up to it and. We could see if we can, uh, try to flush some of that, uh, silt that's in there, uh, out with either, uh, with an air, uh, like an air compressor. Or like a water generator so that we can loosen up that, that silt.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, a little trash pump, talk.
Yeah.
What about that, uh, super center we got?
Well, the thing is, it, you've, you gotta get in the middle of the.
Yeah, we, we would have to, we would have to.
Do we have long enough hoses for that?
The thing is, with their, the cliffs, you can't get, you can't get that.
We, we have to get that before we're building that platform. On that side, we'd have to build a, like a little rope to it. We could, 'cause water level is really low and then get, get, uh.
Get close, close enough.
Close enough that we can, uh, pump, um, pump the, the, um, silt that's built up on those. That first casing where they put that, that pipe, that's a sixty four inch casing, so that's our largest casing, and then the other two casings are thirty six inch. They're about maybe twelve or fourteen feet deep, and they're concrete on the bottom.
Right.
But over time, since we removed it, it wasn't pumping anything, silt was just, uh.
It's going up, yeah.
So we're, we're looking to see if we can put in, uh, maybe, uh, like, a pipe into those, into each of those wells. And with an air compressor up at the top, and then we can then, uh, loosen up that soil so that it can get, uh, once it's loose.
It might work, you know.
See if they're able to be pumped out, but at a solid.
Basically what they do to the water wells, they jet them down.
Yeah, I think that, that's, I think that may work, you know.
Okay.
Sorry, you could.
Yeah, I'll work with Mr. pretty young on that and see if we can, uh, uh, bring in, uh, solutions for that.
Okay. Got a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, and, and, just on the timeline on the electric pump, the mobile electric pump.
Yes, on that one, it's, um, I think they maybe have like another month.
Another month?
Yes, and the, on the twenty fourth, which is this week, the, um, other company in Vero Bridge is gonna come to the study.
See what it, may, maybe they'll have some ideas on how to get that.
That's.
Silt out of those, out of the well that we have there, yeah.
Everybody, uh, the, the excavators, the long reach, did everybody make that?
No, haven't, we, we have a P O, does not make.
We look elsewhere to get one sooner. I mean, is it, I mean, it'll take a long time and we need it.
We took bids on it, Commissioner, and we advertised for it, so anybody was, uh, uh, able to bid on it. Um, and then, meaning that we have, uh, funding from, uh, U S D A, which is a, um, I guess federal source. We, we did procure it in, in, um, I guess in their system to where, for us to, if we want to cancel, we, we can look at that, I can ask, can.
We're in the process.
And they think.
That's a good question.
Do you think the E T A should be, what, December?
That's what they had, that I can try to see if we can.
I spoke with a gentleman about, the police are probably excited.
I'm probably.
All right, thank you, Gonzalez.
All right, thanks.
You voted on it, right, Senator?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to twenty three, to request the use of the community center on October the eighth, twenty twenty five for a continuing education fair, Ms. Fonda Delgado.
Good morning, ma'am. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Fonda, this is Monis Sol, we are South Texas Southern Council.
Good to see you.
We are here to request the use of the community center and its parking area on, for Wednesday, October eighth, from ten to two P M. For the purpose of a continuing education, health, and resource event. We have spoken with Ms. Fonda and maybe.
Is available? Yeah, the pro. Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck, thank you. Item number twenty four is to consider, to discuss, consider, and possibly approve Lone Star Strategy Group, L L C, to apply for the Texas House Bill three thousand. Good morning, Ms. Sutter.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Um, just kind of a, a quick update before decision, the item, um, I attended the legislative update conference in Austin, and during that time, uh, I accompanied. Judge Martinez and Judge Gueda to Ryan Bean's office. Uh, the chairman was gracious enough to bring in several agencies with upcoming funding through the legislation. Uh, this was one of them. We did have the comptroller's office there, and they mentioned that out of the eighty four million that is going to be available now. Uh, they are four million dollars short to fund everyone that's eligible for this. Uh, being that Sapa has ten thousand or less in population year, eligible for five hundred thousand. That is either for an ambulance that, um, is for the county or for the vendor that serves the county. Of course, ambulance would belong to the county and there would have to be an Emerald newer place. Uh, but if there is not a need for a new ambulance, if they, y'all have enough, they have enough, uh, it could be used for equipment, upgrade any existing ambulance. So those are the only two. There's not a match. Uh, it's gonna be on a first come, first served basis. The application process or opening doesn't open until January first, but I'm bringing it now just to get ahead of the ball and make sure that we have that application well before the holidays. You know how that, how, once Thanksgiving comes on, everybody's kinda stirred up, so.
Giving up to, uh, request proposals for.
That, that would be probably the, the first thing, and just, um, do you all have like an E S D or you have a private vendor that you work with? I'm not sure how your ambulance service works.
Uh, there's private vendors. I mean, I don't know, we have a, our department runs Sapa County.
So you have your own, oh, that's great.
I'll require the ambulances, of course.
That's perfect, and I can meet with that, uh, department and, uh, whoever else needs to be involved, Judge, and then we can start looking at, uh, the vendors. You have up to five years to use this funding, so that's a good thing. I just wanna make sure that we're.
Yeah, 'cause I think by the time you order one and, and procure it, uh, it's like two to three years, uh, that an ambulance takes to, to actually get the, the actual vehicle in, in, in working.
Yeah, that, we're going through that right now.
Yeah, I know, so.
So, and, and this has to be done, they just made sure that we didn't try to, you know, personate what we're going through, and if the, the procurement ahead of the January first date.
Well, I appreciate you, uh, yeah.
Uh, you know, we can go through like by order tips or, you know, some procurement, uh, co-op if we need to. But I just wanted to bring this now because I'd like to get ahead of it.
So, so this grant will require administration or won't require?
No, it's just the application. There's not, there's not like any kind of admin fees or any of that. So that's just something that, you know, we wanna provide and get ready for that with that application.
Well, thank you.
So that come January first, it's ready to go and submit, and you're with that first group that gets funding.
Motion.
Great news.
Motion to, to approve by Commissioner Moya, seconded by Commissioner Raza. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, put, but concentrate on this one?
Yes.
And the question asked by Ms. Sutter is, are required to go out for, uh, uh, services?
Uh, for which one?
For, for current, on item number twenty four.
Twenty four.
Or can we just award, uh, Lone Star Strategy Group to represent the county, or do we have to advertise, uh?
Maybe it doesn't carry an admin, this one doesn't carry an admin fee.
It won't carry the admin, I, I'm just.
But she's, she's, she's working for us, she already is.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, Judge, I thought we had an existing company.
Are we still in the six months?
Yes, it's still to the end of October, so regardless of what happens, I would have already been able to take care of that for you all, uh, as a service of.
Uh, that's good. I just wanna make sure that we follow the state rules.
We had a services agreement, uh, uh, for, for that period, you know, I thought we were still under that.
Yeah, we are, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Got a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty five is to discuss, consider, and possibly approve a resolution for the Texas House Bill three thousand.
And then again, Judge, it's just getting ahead of it and having everything already approved and ready to go.
Motion approved by Commissioner Morales, seconded by Commissioner Raza, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item number twenty six is to discuss the Colonia Funds Grant.
Now, that one, Judge, is, uh, T D A was also at that meeting, uh, and I did speak on behalf of Sapa County, asking that we're eligible for the new funding. That's when they, uh, let me know that as long as, uh, the closeout was done by that Friday for the past project you had, then Sapa would now be eligible this coming year for another one million dollar.
Yes.
Uh, grant. So, uh, from what I know, that was taken care of that Friday.
Yes.
Uh, so we're glad to hear that, and now you all have to go through the procurement period, but I just wanted to let you know that you are. Uh, so we're glad to hear that and now you all have to go through the procurement period, but I just wanted to let you know that you are eligible this coming year to start going out for the RFPs, RFUs for that.
We will be doing that, in fact, we might have done that last meeting.
Would you, would you go on?
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, that's already been.
Yes, yeah, so we, we, we're going out, I think we went already out for the procurement.
Perfect. Has that already been set out, okay, all right. Then we're good with that and we'll start another again, discussion.
Okay.
No action.
There's no action on the. And item uh number twenty-seven is to discuss, consider and possibly approve Lone Star Strategy Group LLC to apply for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five State Homeland Security Program and Urban Area Security Initiative Supporting Border Crisis Response and Enforcement Projects.
So Judge, this is funding that came from the federal uh government down to the state. Uh, you had to be invited to apply for this, so this is for your border counties and I believe any counties a hundred miles in from the border. Zapata County is eligible. Uh, we came up with a list of the three priorities for the sheriff and we discussed this with Andrew as well. Uh, we gave this to them last week, we had a call on this, uh, you should have it in your packet, the three different options. Um, that is something that, uh, this is due October tenth, so again, a quick turnaround.
That would be.
Uh, I will, I don't know, Andrew, do you want to speak to this, think on, on this one? Kind of see what your.
Do we have that?
Do I have a more here? So, uh, the sheriff and I just looked over all the projects and uh we chose project number one because it's one of the best ones for us.
Do you all have that in your packets?
Is this project number two, Ralph?
Number one is the one that you.
Well, three projects, border operations, intelligence center.
Yes, sir, that is the one.
And then, so we have budget there of eight hundred fifty to one point two million and project two would be tactical gear. So we will be applying for all three projects or?
No, sir, uh, we came up with the three priorities and uh we let the sheriff.
Priorities.
Number one, yeah, the sheriff and I, uh, I think project number one is probably the best one uh that we can go for.
What is project number one again?
Uh, this, that one's gonna be uh.
A mobile command trainer.
Yeah, a mobile commander, yes.
Drone fleet, thermal night vision capability, uh, fixed camera towers and license plate reader networks, uh, data platform, platform for information sharing with regional and federal partners and secure I T upgrades and facility enhancements, which are all really good. How about patrol car?
Sure, so we're kind of leaning towards the uh more left right now.
Yeah, are we trying to get some from?
Yeah, we're gonna try to get some from more left. Uh, we were kind of considering O P S G, uh, because O P S G does allow uh to get each uh units.
Okay.
However, with O P S G, those units are only to be utilized only for the operation itself.
Okay.
So it can't be like a normal patrol unit or anything like that, so that's kind of one of the reasons why we're kind of.
You're choosing this as a, I guess higher priority, a better chance of, of me being funded.
Yeah, so.
If you're not working that overtime, you have to be part of it.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, so we're kind of just, we're aware of those things, so we're kind of making sure that we're compliant with.
Very well.
Now, Ms. Sade, I have a question, if uh this project goes through, your contract ends at the end of October, correct? What would happen to this project if you get uh?
Awarded.
I guess we would talk about that, I know that after Commissioner's court, I'm gonna go meet with the sheriff and Andrew about possibly, you know, extending it maybe at a lower fee to continue since we've done a lot of the administrative stuff early on and that was the fee that we set for all that work. Uh, we don't know where we're at right now, we'll come back in October to talk to you, but regardless, if this is something we apply for, we're gonna follow through with it just like we promised in our contract.
Motion to.
Is there a match to this?
No, sir, there is no match to this.
Okay, good.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gassa, seconded by Commissioner Solis, any discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we will be applying for uh project elements as discussed, project one.
Yeah, I, yes, October tenth, yes.
Item number twenty-six, to discuss and consider possibly approve the resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-five State Homeland Security Program and Urban Area Security Initiative Supporting Border Crisis Response and Enforcement Project. Yes, Ms. Sade.
And we will just, yes, and we will send, this is a, a resolution that comes from the office of the governor, so we'll send that in, it's basically like a template.
Just a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner, uh, got a second by Commissioner Morales, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioner. I'll be around if anyone needs to speak to me.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, I've got some streetlights for three fifty-two Goncalo Street, one forty-nine Floyde's Drive, eleven ten Elm Street, three oh seven Glen Street, twenty forty-nine Red Farm Drive, twenty seven oh eight U S Highway three and twenty-nine seventy-five South U S Highway.
Motion to approve.
Motion by, to approve by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Gassa, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are the U S Highway, Commissioner Judge, those are the ones the, the straightaway uh pass, I guess, also blocking out the dark piece right there. And then the curve where uh they have the storage unit in Mr. Fenya, that curve is super hard.
Would that be uh for the state though?
I don't know, that's why they're gonna approve and then take the next step, see where we gotta go with it.
Yeah, because I think those would be the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, talk to her on that.
Wouldn't those be precinct three though, on, it depends on what side I guess you're.
Yeah, it is, yeah, I would say, but there's, there's both on my side as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just have to mess with Salinas, anything after mess with Salinas, left or right is on my.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's both on my side where the family does that.
Okay, yeah, I would talk to her so you won't lose those two lights.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Line item transfers, Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve line item transfers I presented, seconded by.
Gassa.
Commissioner Gassa, any discussions, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got a resolution to adopt a workforce reduction and service policy for Zapata County, Commissioner Gassa.
Yeah, on this one, uh, I uh talked to legal uh about reducing the workforce, you know, due to the situation we're in currently with our, with our county budget and stuff. So this just gives us the authority to, you know, uh, bring our workforce down if it be.
Should it become necessary, that's right, it's just as was discussed during our budget year, Judge.
Right.
In order for the court to take such action, should it ever be required, it would have to, the policy would have to be adopted by the court prior to taking any type of mid-year action should whatever emergency comes.
Should we adopt a workforce reduction in the policy for Zapata County?
Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Gassa, any discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got one executive session item, item number thirty-four is to review and consider an agreement between Zapata County and Zapata County Independent School District regarding uh the use of the Los Angeles golf course, executive session, the first act of service, the Texas bill, quote title five of chapter D, section five five one, point zero seven one, constipation returning. Motion for executive session. Motion by Commissioner Solis to executive session, seconded by Commissioner Gassa, we are now in executive session.
Isn't that one?
Yeah, this was the people.
Chris, Ziva, Akama?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
Judge, may I make a motion to return to record session?
Oh, thank you, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Sodis to return to record session, signed by Commissioner Gassa, for the record, no act was taken in executive session. Item number twenty-nine is to review and consider an agreement between Zapata County and Zapata County Independent School District regarding the use of the government's thought force.
Judge, may I make a motion to submit a casual proposal to Zapata County Independent School District for a review?
Motion by Commissioner Sodis, signed by Commissioner Moya and with all those who pay respect.
Aye.
Motion carried will be moved forward in the agreement for a review.
Motion secured.
Okay. Motion secured by Commissioner Zephanasa, signed by Commissioner Sodis.